Alarcon Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Coetz, Gregorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Weston Zine, Garcetti, eleven members present and a corner, Mr. President.
Thank you, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes?
All right, Mr. Zine moves and Mr. Weston seconds, without objection, those will be approved, next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions.
Mr. Alarcon moves in, Mr. Cardenas seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, colleagues, if I can direct your attention to any items you wish to call special, first items, please.
Items number one through six are items for which public hearings have been held.
All righty, anybody wishing to call items one through six special, we do not expect Mr. Labonge, Ms. Perry, or Mr. Reyes, but we are expecting Mr. Weezer, so let's hold number one until Mr. Weezer is here. But two through six, are there any specials? If not, let's take those up, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved, next items, please.
Items seven through sixteen are items for which public hearings have not been held, sin votes required for consideration, there's requests to continue item thirteen till May twentieth.
There's no objection in consideration, those are before us, and no objection to continuing item thirteen till the twentieth, so ordered, do we have cards on any of these?
Cards on item sixteen.
Okay, we'll close the other public hearings, and Mr. Rosenthal, any specials?
Eleven specials, want to ask some questions.
Okay, we'll call eleven special for Mr. Rosenthal, any other specials, colleagues? Do you have any other cards that have just? Any other cards on any of those items? Sixteen, okay, sixteen, call special also for Mr. Coetz, that's called special for cards already, let's take up the balance, if there are no other specials, items seven through ten, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Today is Friday, and we do have a few presentations, and then we'll come back for general public comment and the items called special, I'd like to recognize from the seventh council district, Councilmember Alarcon, for two presentations.
Today, I am actually recognizing the work of the county, and in doing so, hopefully, announcing to the community something that's very important. You know, I want to hold out an L.A. Times story, and the headline says Hunger Touches More Than 1.7 Million in Los Angeles County. And we always think of hunger in terms of some foreign country, some third world country typically, but we don't think of hunger in Los Angeles. Well, when our unemployment rate is what it is, and even before unemployment rate was high, we have hundreds of thousands, and in the case of this story, 1.7 million people in Los Angeles County who are hungry. And so, I want to recognize the county for doing something very special. Today, I'm with Phil Browning, I hope I have all these names correct, okay, Phil Browning, the Director of the Los Angeles County Department of Social Services, Michael Flood, CEO of the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, and Matt Sharp, the Senior Advocate for the California Food Policy Advocates. And we're here to recognize Los Angeles, and indeed California's first ever CalFresh Awareness Month. You're probably wondering, what is CalFresh? So, let me tell you that last fall, Governor Schwarzenegger signed into law an official name change for the food stamp program, something that advocates, including Matt Sharp, who have long advocated for. And the reason for this, and let me tell you, when I used to be a grocery clerk, and people would come through with food stamps, I was well aware, and in fact, when I had to carry food stamps for my mother, when I was a teenager, I can tell you, there is a very strong stigma. I felt that stigma both as somebody who had to use food stamps, but also when I was cashiering and would get complaints from customers behind people with food stamps. Just the other day, I was behind somebody who had food stamps, and it's a very complicated process, they have to fill out a certificate for these types of products, and actually she went through three different processes of purchases, because they had to segregate the items based on the certificate that they had. And so, that could cause very uncomfortable feelings, obviously, for the person, but also for the people standing in line, they get upset. And so, anything we can do to reduce that stigma, I think is very beneficial, particularly when we are eligible for these monies. So, I want to commend the state for changing the name of this, CalFresh sounds a lot better than food stamps, but we are the second to the last amongst all states in the take-up rate for those eligible for food stamps. That means that we are second to the lowest in the United States as to people who are eligible for food stamps, but who are not using them. And that's indeed, when you look at the L.A. Times story, and you think that people aren't using food stamps, that they are eligible. Now, who is, who are the recipients of food stamps? Typically, it is kids, and that is even more horrendous, when we consider that we could feed these people with the resources that the United States has to offer. So, here in Los Angeles County, just half of those eligible for CalFresh are enrolled. This is a disgrace, we need to change that, and I think we, as council members, have a responsibility to pony up as well. Last month, the National Hungry Institute found that Feeding America, they found that one-sixth of Americans is food insecure, one in six. Here in Los Angeles, last week, I mentioned the L.A. Times article, that means we are at ground zero in the United States. This need is urgent, and I want to applaud Los Angeles County Department of Social Services for taking the initiative and devoting resources to create the first ever CalFresh Awareness Month in the state of California. Throughout the month of May, DPSS is hosting a media or CalFresh enrollment event every day, often multiple events per day throughout Los Angeles County. This is only a problem we're going to address by working at it. Here in the city of Los Angeles, I'm very pleased that CDD's Family Source Centers are using one E app, which notifies every person that walks through the Family Source Centers doors, if they are eligible for CalFresh. But this is not enough, we as elected officials, as I said, I think we have a responsibility. So, I hope that each of you will in some way promote a CalFresh awareness within your districts, so that we can get from 50% enrollment, to hopefully closer to 100% enrollment. Today, I pledge that I will discuss the where and how to apply to CalFresh at least three of my community events this month, and urge you to do the same. In fact, if I have any community events, I will mention this issue. And now, so I'd like to present Philip Browning, the Director of DPSS, Michael Flood, the CEO of Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, and Matt Sharp, Senior Advocate for, at the California Food Policy Advocates, to let us know more about how CalFresh works, and how we can get the word out to our constituents and our viewers on Channel 35.
Thank you, sir, I really appreciate that. We have a short PowerPoint presentation that one of the staff, Bill Taylor, is going to help me through. I think you've had a great introduction to the program, but you may not know that we, just Los Angeles County, we're the largest county, but, you know, we don't cover the entire state, but since the recession began a couple of years ago, we've added 350,000 participants to the CalFresh program. It's no longer called the food stamp program, that's something we really want to get across. We have about 1 million individuals in Los Angeles County today who receive those CalFresh benefits, but as was said earlier, there are probably another million people who are eligible that don't even know about it. I imagine within two miles of this building, there are probably several thousand individuals who are eligible, but they just don't know it. One of the most important things to know is that this is money coming into the economy. These individuals receive over 1.8 billion dollars that's spent in the local economy, in grocery stores, in restaurants, we have Restaurant Meals Program for some of the individuals who are homeless and don't have any way to cook. So, we have a number of programs, but the main reason we're here today is to talk about a public awareness campaign that we think is so critical. I think the reason, Bill, and you can move this, the state has rebranded the food stamp program, we don't use that term anymore, we're trying to talk about this as a CalFresh program, and we're also talking about the nutritious foods that can be purchased, fresh fruits and vegetables is also something we're really trying to highlight. We're trying to eliminate the stigma, we're trying to reduce hunger, it's a shame to say that we have so much hunger in Los Angeles County, but with the layoffs, the loss of homes, we have 50 or 60 offices around the county where we can actually take an application. When I go into one of those offices, we have lines at the door, we have very few seats available, and the people who are in those seats look like you and I. They've never expected to come and ask for something. It's a totally different population, I think we need to know that. It's like your neighbor and my neighbor who've lost their job, and have really had hard times. We're really working well with our partners that are going to talk to you in just a little bit, about how important it is, we have up on the screen there, the large number of partners, we as a county department cannot do it all by ourselves, you as a city council, the Board of Supervisors, or all of our staff, can't do it alone, you can help get the message out, we've provided you some information, a packet, and if you have outreach events, I think you can certainly help us. There's a campaign that started this last week, that is really kicked off by a radio campaign funded by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. I think all of you know that these are 100% federally funded benefits, the people who are eligible for them should see this as an entitlement, but many of the people don't. We have a number of ways for people to apply it that we didn't have before, we have an online application, so you can sit in your home or a library and start the process, we have a mobile office that's available, and we're taking it to underserved neighborhoods. So, if some of you have events, or if you have community centers that you think can benefit from this, give us a call, because we do have an outreach campaign that we need your help. We have public service announcements, some of you may know Dolores Huerta, who came in and did a great PSA for us, to talk about the importance of the community to walk in, apply online, or actually make a phone call. There's so many things that can be done now that couldn't be done before. Bill? We had a kickoff at the Maywood Elementary School to just talk about the value of the program, healthy eating, we had the Public Health Director for the county there, but the most important thing was the mascot from the Chivas. That person really got those 150 kids excited, and we had healthy eating, and how do you make a berry shake, it was a fantastic event. This week also, at one of the farmer's markets, we had a discussion about the public charge, so many people who are in immigrant community, they're legal immigrants, but they think that if they apply for something from us, that'll impact their citizenship, we're trying to clarify that. We have many, many outreach events, and I think you all have a calendar, if you have any interest in attending those, let one of us know, or maybe your staff might have some interest. We also have brochures that we'd like to make sure that your offices have, so that we can get the word out. I'm going to turn this over now to Michael Flood, who's going to tell you a little bit more about the need from his perspective, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Director Browning, my name's Michael Flood, I'm the CEO of the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, Council President, Garcetti, members of the L.A. City Council, we appreciate you putting this first on the agenda. And looking at the members of the council, all of you have been supportive of hunger programs, whether they be charitable, or government, and other elected office, every name I see around here, all of you have done something, and we're here today to ask you to do more, because the need is huge, the unemployment rate we have locally has pushed many people in the line, seeking food assistance from food pantries, the diagram up on the board will show you that the food bank's core work is bringing in food from the food industry, from USDA, from supermarkets, retailers, purchasing that food, and getting that out to 600 charitable agencies throughout L.A. County, that in turn serve a million residents of L.A. County. One in 10 people now seek food assistance from a charity over the course of a year. Bill, if you could just forward it for a minute, just a snapshot, last year, we distributed 62 million pounds of food, the equivalent of 47 million meals, the value of that food to the community is 55 million dollars, and you see some of the other key stats there, but the reason we're partnering with the county on this CalFresh outreach effort, Bill, if you could just advance to the next slide, is because we don't have enough food. Even though our volume has grown by more than 60% over these last two years, there's still a shortage of food at food pantries and charitable agencies throughout the city of Los Angeles, and throughout the county of Los Angeles. And as you heard from Director Browning, only about half the people who are eligible for the CalFresh program are receiving the benefit, there's a huge opportunity there to get people fed, seniors and kids and families, also realize this, working families are eligible for this, this is an income-tested program, so many people in this program now are in fact working, have adults in the household working. So, there's a huge opportunity here for us, we're doing everything we can to push this effort out, and the food bank is pleased to partner with the L.A. County Department of Public Social Services, and the next person I want to introduce, Matt Sharp from California Food Policy Advocates. Matt and I also serve on the newly-formed L.A. Food Policy Council, that has been formed by Paula Daniels, who's in the Public Works Department of Commissioner, with the mayor's full support, and we're working on both, working on the nutrition issue and the hunger issue, but also trying to see how we can introduce more good food into the lives of people here in Los Angeles, so Matt?
Thanks, Michael, my name is Matt Sharp, I work with California Food Policy Advocates, one of the nonprofit organizations in Los Angeles, working with residents across the city and government stakeholders, to try and make these programs work better, and to reach more of the families that are entitled to them. And I just wanted to take a moment to share with you a little bit about what's happening in a really positive way, and then give you a couple ideas about some more steps you might take to strengthen this initiative over the coming month, and perhaps months beyond that. As Michael pointed out, the city's convened a food policy council that's looking at a range of complicated challenges, from grocery retail, to the food in schools, and one of the core components of what the Food Policy Council's doing is looking at making nutritious food and good food affordable, and the CalFresh program is the key strategy to accomplish that. So, the partnership with the Department of Public Social Services, that you've been hearing about this morning, is a tremendous indication of collaboration and opportunities to strengthen the work among different government partners to meet local residents' needs. One of the great successes of the last year has been, as you heard from Councilmember Alarcon, strengthening the coordination with your Community Development Department, and the County Department of Public Social Services. We're really pleased with the level of coordination happening, provides a lot more residents' opportunities to apply for benefits in an easy fashion at a location right in their neighborhood, and that's really exciting, and you all feel good, you all feel good about having made that happen. A couple of the opportunities for ways to strengthen this program, to strengthen the enrollment in CalFresh, as you heard a few minutes ago, there's some simple steps you all can take through your websites, through your district offices, through materials that go out in your weekly email messages to constituents, giving folks the email link to this program. It's fairly easy to apply now, a lot of reforms have been made to simplify the process, and you all have a very visible role in your neighborhoods and communities, and could be champions for this program. The second step you might take is to consider what other city departments could play a role in assisting with the promotion and the enrollment activities. The libraries, the Department of Recreation and parks, numerous city agencies are in contact with residents on a regular basis, the 3-1-1 line has been the key vehicle to implement the city's food rescue ordinance, that you all enacted over a year ago to try and capture surplus food. There are a number of vehicles the city has at its disposal, to try and make more residents aware of the program, so we'd love you to be champions at press events, and through your websites, and through materials, as well as to take a look at what departments beyond the Community Development Department could assist with the enrollment process in providing better information to residents about benefits they're entitled to. So, this is a problem that can be solved, lots of communities across the nation have enrolled upwards of 80, 90% of residents, and with the partnership you see here today, Los Angeles is on its way. So, thank you for your time, and I think we wanted to see if you want to answer any questions, or any follow-up remarks that any council members might have, I think we have one more slide, Bill?
Yes, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Han.
Just an idea that came from a community group in my district, and one of my staff, that's been very useful for other council members, they might want to do this, we have what we call Citrus Sunday. In my part of the valley, we have a tremendous amount of orange trees, grapefruit, lemon trees that are in the area, and they, and over at Cal State, Northridge University had a large grove of orange trees, stuff drops in the ground, just gets wasted. And so, we go out with our neighborhood councils, we collect about, on an average, about 15,000 pounds every time we do it, and we give it to the local food bank at Valley Interfaith Councils. So, it's a great project, a lot of community support, and it's a great project for neighborhood councils, and it's very popular in my district, and certainly very popular with the food bank. So, it's just a little idea you might want to take back to your districts, and thank you for what you do, thank you.
Ms. Han?
Thank you, that's a very great idea, I know even in the harbor area, there is tremendous amount of lemon trees and orange trees, and that's an interesting idea we might take to our neighborhood councils down there. Well, I just wanted to stand up and first of all, thank Richard Alarcon for having this presentation this morning, I think it is so enlightening to hear how this program has evolved, and how it has changed to meet the needs of the new hungry in our neighborhoods and our communities, and it's so important to try to educate folks on the types of people who now are accessing this, and as you said, they're like us, they're our neighbors. So many people have lost their jobs, so many people have lost their homes, and this is such an important, important safety net, and an important part of their lives to help feed their families, without embarrassment, and without shame, and without feeling in any way that they are less of a human being in our society because they have to access this. I wanted to bring to the attention of this body, I signed, I authored a motion in council to have a resolution supporting Felipe Fuentes' bill AB 6, which actually takes this and streamlines the bureaucracy to make this program even more valuable. I believe it removes the requirement that people have to get fingerprinted and photographed to sign up for this program. Again, let's not treat people like criminals, who have become victims of this terrible financial crisis in this country, and I believe it streamlines some other things about signups, and according to Felipe, it will help encourage close to another 150,000 families to be able to participate in this. So, thank you for bringing this to our attention, we have that coming before us soon to sign on as a city, supporting that bill in the Assembly, because it too will help move this program forward in a responsible and compassionate way, so thank you for what you all are doing.
Thank you. Mr. Coetz?
Yeah, this is great, and I appreciate it, I just have one question for some of the representatives, I know that they have to separate out certain categories of food that are in the program and out of the program, when you visit a grocery store, is there any way that they could computerize a system, so that the items that are good are computerized in advance, the items that aren't allowed are computerized in advance, and there wouldn't be any stigma or slowdown, and it would just be done on the actual receipt?
Right, that's a good question, and I think the program you're referring to actually is the WIC program, where there are some restrictions, the food stamp, or now CalFresh program, there, it's, the restrictions are, it just needs to be a food purchase, so there are not those restrictions, and part of the reason why the name has changed is because the old food stamps, that many of us remember, are gone, and now this is on an electronic benefit card, so someone swiping that card in front of you, you wouldn't know if that's a credit card, or any other type of card, so some of those stigma issues have been addressed with the most recent reauthorization of this.
Well, even at the supermarkets, though, you don't only buy food stamps, so you still would have the problem of having to separate out cleaning supplies, and this and that. I'm just wondering if they could, if they could change that in their computers, it would completely eliminate that problem, and not slow down the lines, and...
Well, I think the computer system does segregate and identify those items, for instance, you can't buy alcohol, and you can't buy cigarettes, things like that, you can't use them in casinos anymore, so there have been some changes made in the program, but if you're going through, if you have an EBT card, oftentimes, there will be a cash benefit on that in addition to the CalFresh benefits. So, if you're buying something with the cash benefit, it could be soap or laundry detergent, that would just go through and be credited against that account, and if it's milk or something else, it would be credited to the CalFresh account. But there are some programs, just like Michael said, that the WIC program has a much more restrictive kind of process, but the CalFresh program is much more streamlined than it's ever been, it does use electronic benefit card, looks just like your Visa or Master Card.
Well, that's good to hear, thank you.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, I think it's important that we all realize that sometimes government's trying to do something good, but sometimes they make it way too onerous. It just occurred to me, I was just talking to somebody from the Community Development Department, and in that department, we actually give out grants and loans of 50,000, 500,000, a million dollars, and loans of five and 10 and 50 million dollars to corporations, but none of those corporate leaders who sign on the dotted line to make that agreement with government are required to give a photo of themselves, or a fingerprint, and it's really ridiculous that we would allow ourselves as a government to require a family that just needs to feed itself, and basically, we're talking about hundreds of dollars a month, not 50,000 dollars, not 50 million dollars, and yet, at the same time, as Janice said, they're treated like criminals, meaning they have to take a photo, and then they have to get a fingerprint, so it's those are the kinds of things that I think that us as policymakers need to support resolutions, so that other levels of government who have that responsibility and control will actually get themselves under control, and not be so onerous, and not push people away, especially poor people who just need to eat, push them away from a program, and deter them from feeling welcome to a program. So, I think it's really important that days like this are opportunities of awareness, and I want to thank you, Councilmember Alarcon, for all the work that you have been doing, looking into these matters and supporting good, responsible legislation, and also making sure that we don't forget that we represent everybody in this city, we represent everybody as elected officials, and we have to be willing to get into the details when necessary, to make sure that things are improved, so that people aren't pushed away from utilizing programs that are actually tailor-made for them, and then making sure that we create that awareness, and we do what we can to make sure they utilize it, thank you.
Mr. Alarcon?
If there are no more speakers, let me just reiterate one point, we're losing about 2.3 billion dollars in the county of Los Angeles in federal funding, because people are not signing up for this program. We often criticize the federal government for giving us 63 cents back on the tax dollars that we're sending to the federal government, but the Earned Income Tax Credit is another example of us not taking advantage of dollars that are coming, available from the federal government, that individuals are not applying for, and they are eligible for, so once again, I would urge you to work with projects in your area, to let people know that they qualify for food programs, and they should be applying. What I'd like to do is introduce a motion, offer that I would introduce a motion, because quite frankly, some of our full-load employees, some of our part-time city employees, some of our emergency city employees, probably qualify for this program, and so, I will introduce a motion to ask that during this month, all general managers send a notice to all their employees about the eligibility requirements for this program, and encourage particularly city workers who are on the lower end of the pay scale, that they may be eligible for these programs, and they should proudly seek this support for their families. Thank you very much for the extended time, I apologize, but we only have three presentations, so...
You have two of the three.
Duly noted.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. All right, our next presentation will be from CD 14, and also on number one, we'd like to open the roll on number one for a vote, please, Madam Clerk. Close the roll on number one, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very well, that is an ordinance. That is an ordinance. Cinco de Mayo. Senor Garcetti. Senor Cardenas. Mr. Smith is noticing that it was yesterday, but we didn't have a councilman yesterday, Mr. Smith. So, retroactive. We're celebrating today. Cinco de Mayo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zain, Mr. President, and happy Cinco de Mayo, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here today with Councilmember Cardenas and Council President Eric Garcetti as we honor representatives from the state of Puebla, who, as you know, is where a battle took place over 140 years ago, where a less armed Mexican army won what was considered at the time the best army in the world, the French Army. We lost the battle, but, I mean, we won the battle, but we eventually lost the war, and the French occupied Mexico for some time. But what the Battle of Puebla has come to symbolize is the pride, the patriotism, and the idea that Mexicans can overcome anything, no matter what the obstacle is, when we continue to work hard. You find that throughout the Mexican culture. And here in the United States, Cinco de Mayo has come to be a larger celebration than the Independence Day, which is the larger celebration in Mexico, which is celebrated September 16th. This came about because in the 1960s and 70s, through political activism, many what we call Chicanos were looking for a way to show their pride, and they focused on Cinco de Mayo as a way to show their pride, and it is one of the largest celebrated Mexican holidays here in the United States. We have with us today a representative from the state of Puebla, Rafael Von Reisfeld-Porras. He will be speaking in a moment. Welcome to the City of Los Angeles. Also speaking today is Pedro Ramos, founder of La Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior, a very active group of individuals that not only work to benefit poblanos here in the United States but in Mexico. And also Arturo Carmona, representing the Council of Mexican Federations, also known as COFEM. This is a unity of all the Mexican club, state clubs here in Los Angeles who have been very active to make sure they provide the services that their Mexican patriots deserve. So, with that, let me now turn it over to our Council President, Council, Eric Garcetti, for a few words.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Weisar, and it is great to join you here to celebrate Cinco de Mayo, on Seis de Mayo. But we also are celebrating Cinco de Mayo for its large significance, really the friendship between Puebla and the United States, and Mexico and the United States, for two reasons. The battle that happened in Puebla was important because it was the last time that a European power tried to invade an American state. And turning the tide back, and then a year later, a 30,000-strong force that was able to finally defeat the French Army really signaled the end of colonialism or attempts at colonialism in the Americas. Secondly, many, and this has made it a very significant American holiday, and also for African-Americans, there was a lot of people at the time who thought that the real intention of France was not just to dominate Mexico, but was to disrupt during the Civil War the United States, to support the Confederacy and to help the United States break up, and slavery would have continued. It would have been something in which this nation probably would not be what it is. And because of that, we owe a debt of gratitude to our Mexican brothers and sisters in Puebla for helping that not come true, and helping us keep this country together, and helping us end slavery in the United States. So, you know, it's celebrated in some places, much more in the United States than it is in parts of Mexico, because it has been very much an American holiday as much as it's been a Mexican holiday. But certainly for Puebla, it shows the bravery of our brothers and sisters, of a small force, of the underdog overcoming the colonial power, and also the end for an entire set of continents of the colonial period. So, congratulations, felicidades. Remember that history. I know we kind of celebrate it as a fun day, but it is a serious historical day for us, for both of our nations as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I think today is significant in allowing us to all remember that sometimes we might engage in a battle, and we might not realize that we're engaging in a battle that's bigger than what we see before us. And obviously, the Battle of Puebla was not the end of a war, but it certainly was a significant moment, a seminal moment, for people to believe in what is right and what is good, and that is freedom. And something, freedom is a word that Americans use all the time, and we're very proud and honored to be able to say so, and truly know that there is significance behind that word. For too many places around the world, freedom does not exist as we know it. But thank God for Mexico, they had the Battle of Puebla, and that was a seminal moment for a people to believe that they can be free. And as a result of that, eventually, they won the war. So, to me, today is a significant opportunity for me to honor the heritage that I am part of, which is my parents were, my father was born in Temashtan Jalisco, Mexico, and he was raised there until he married my mother and came to California as a migrant farmworker. But my mother was actually born here in the United States on East La Catalina, which is actually territory of Mexico, but is actually being leased to the United States at 99 years at a time. So, my mother has an American passport, or had, she passed away. But at the same time, at the age of three, she, her family went back to Temashtan Jalisco, where she grew up. She did not come back to the United States until she married my father, Andres, and then they raised 11 children right here in Pacoima. So, the reason why it's important to me is because I'm proud to be an American. Yet, at the same time, like many of us, we are very proud of our heritage and the things that were taught to us, the languages that were shared with us, and the kinds of things that we learned from some very humble people who unfortunately grew up in perhaps countries that don't have the freedoms that we have and don't have the prosperity that we have. So, today is an opportunity for us to remind people of all ages, and certainly children, that you should be proud of who you are, and you should be proud to do that here on this land, where you can think however you want, you can speak hopefully respectfully however you want, and you also can dream and believe in yourself and embrace the past as well as understanding. In this land of prosperity, the future has no limits. So, that's one of the reasons why Cinco de Mayo started to be celebrated here by Chicanos, Mexican-Americans in the United States, to make sure that their children, the people that they identify with, are not ashamed of their heritage and know that there's a lot to be proud of. Thank you.
Councilmember Alarcon.
To try and put this in context for America, I'd like to think that the actions of those few underdogs in Puebla were very similar to the actions of those people on the flight in Pennsylvania, that crashed in Pennsylvania. It was the same spirit. And each of us, I think, can draw on our own heritage to recognize heroes who were underdogs and yet stood up for a greater cause. I would ask that in respect for the Mexican heritage, that you do that, that you think of your own histories and respect that, and you'll better understand why so many people find Cinco de Mayo a festive day. Because it embraces the culture, it embraces the history, it embraces, more importantly, the heroism and pride that each of us hold in our heart for the heritage that we embrace. And so, as Los Angeles is one of the most diverse places on earth, we are very proud people because of the amazing history of connectedness that we have with our world. It's a unique relationship that we have with our world because we can dial anywhere on earth that have telephones, that is, and connect in the language, in the culture, in the history of that nation. And so, today is a very special day. I want to mention a funny story. My brother's birthday is on Cinco de Mayo, and so he thinks everybody's partying for him. But when I was, I was a city councilman about a dozen years ago, and I went to a grammar school, and it was a Cinco de Mayo celebration, and they were having hula dancing, and I leaned over to the principal, and I said, "Why are you having hula dancing on Cinco de Mayo?" And she said, "Well, we don't want to offend anybody by celebrating Cinco de Mayo." And I said, "Well, what about celebrating the attitude of underdogs fighting for a just cause? Isn't that an important element of Cinco de Mayo?" And you can teach that in any language, probably even through hula dancing. But they weren't even talking about that because they saw it as a celebration. Well, let's understand what the celebration is about. It's about heroism, it's about pride, it's about fighting for something bigger than yourself. And that's, I think, the message that I would hope everybody would walk away from as they celebrate on the Cinco de Mayo.
Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. And yes, indeed, there is an effort to work with some of the beer and wine industry to say that, as they advertise, to show that we are not only, that they not only advertise a day to drink, but we certainly want to let people know the importance of this very historical day in the history not only of Mexico but for all underdogs throughout the world. So, with that, let me now introduce to you a representative of the state of Puebla where the battle took place. He is a congressman who is representing the governor of Puebla. He is here, came all the way from Puebla to join us in the City of Los Angeles, Rafael Von Reisfeld-Porras. Bienvenido.
(Applause). Do you need a translator, please?
Whatever is better, English or Spanish? Buenos dias a todos, es un honor estar con ustedes.
Good morning, all, it's an honor to be here with you.
I can speak in English. No problem, no problem, no problem. It's an honor to be with you. I have a word for you from our state governor, Dr. Rafael Moreno Valle. He's the new governor from Puebla. It is not just a very special moment for this celebration here at the USA, like all the council members have told, but also in Puebla because it has been a very deep change in Puebla governance. And nowadays, we are open to the world. We are seeking to improve our relation, not just with other governments, but also with our own people here at the US. There are more than a million people from Puebla State living in the USA, and they have several kids. And we have, our state had lost some relation with them, so we are now engaged to fulfill all the expectancies. And indeed, we have the goal to achieve that. The Faith of May is not just a drink of mayo, but it's also all of what Mr. and Mrs. Councilors have told. It's a very important date, not just for Puebla but for the USA, for liberty, for abolition of slavery. Our country, Mexico, in our constitution, had said since 1857, 1917, and all the modern constitutions, that slavery was abolished all over the country. In fact, if some people, some slave from another country could arrive to Mexico for the fact of being in Mexico, he was free. So, we have a common battle, not just against the French in that moment, but for liberty, for the commitment of making a better life level for people in Puebla, in Mexico, and working together with you for making better jobs for people in the USA. So, it's an honor to be with you. I would thank Mr. Weisar, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Alarcon, and all of you. There come with me some representative group from Puebla citizens who live here, who also came from Puebla, from different kind of institutions. And please, it's a very important issue for us, not for the past, but for the future. We have, next year will be the 150th anniversary of the Battle of Puebla. We would like to make a bigger, greater celebration, and we will also make this date not just for bonding but for being together, for together work. Thank you very much.
Also with us is Pedro Ramos. He is the founder of La Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior, a very active organization, as I mentioned, representing poblanos in the United States and working with their compatriots in Mexico. Welcome, Mr. Ramos.
Muchas gracias. Buenas dias, I will have a little Spanish. This is Cinco de Mayo, we'll talk in Spanish. Muchas gracias por permitirmelo.
Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Este, agradecemos a este honorable Consilio.
I want to thank this honorable council.
Por reconocer lo que es...
For recognizing what it is.
El Cinco de Mayo como la batalla de Puebla.
May 5th is the Battle of Puebla.
De los hechos históricos en 1862.
Of the historic events in 1862.
También agradezco a todos los líderes comunitarios que nos acompañan en esta mañana.
I also like to thank everybody that's with us this morning.
A todos los compañeros que han trabajado a favor de los Estados Unidos y de su estado de Puebla.
And all the people that have worked with us in Mexico, in the state of Puebla.
Agradecemos a la ciudad de Los Ángeles.
We would like to thank the City of Los Angeles.
Por permitirnos difundir nuestra cultura.
For allowing us to present our culture.
Es para nosotros algo histórico y significante el día de hoy.
Today is something historic and significant for us.
Creo que significa esto un hecho histórico, un antes y un después.
I think this is a historic event before and after.
Estamos muy emocionados la Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior.
The Puebla Union is very excited in the exterior.
Por este suceso importante, agradecemos al consejal Jose Weisar.
And we would like to thank Mr. Jose Weisar because of this event.
Garcetti, Cardenas.
Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Cardenas.
Y Alarcon.
And Mr. Alarcon.
Por esto que hoy, como le digo, seguimos muy emocionados. Pero también queremos que se sepa...
For this event that we're so excited about, but we also would like it to be known.
Que estamos trabajando muy duro también para que la sociedad en los Estados Unidos...
That we're working very hard for the society in the United States.
Nos hemos sabido integrar a esta sociedad.
We have been able to integrate ourselves into this society.
Y muchas gracias también a buen amigo René Díaz.
And I would also like to say thank you very much to our friend, Mr. René Díaz.
A nuestro presidente, el señor Alfredo Gómez.
Our president, Mr. Alfredo Gómez.
Carlos Orea.
Carlos Orea.
Roberto Bravo.
Roberto Bravo.
Luis Torres.
And Luis Torres.
Y a todos los líderes que han sabido llevar a Puebla adelante.
And all the leaders that have been able to carry Puebla forward. Thank you.
Gracias a COFEM.
Thank you to the Confederation.
Arturo Carmona.
Mr. Arturo Cardenas.
Y a todos ustedes.
And to all of you present. Thank you.
And now, our final speaker for today is Arturo Carmona, who representing the Council of Mexican Federations. This is a federation made up of all the different states of Mexico who have done a tremendous job these last few years to organize Mexicans in Los Angeles. Arturo Carmona.
Thank you so much again for recognizing not only the Cinco de Mayo and the significance it has to Mexican people, but also significance it has to Mexican immigrants here in the City of L.A., Mexican-Americans. The only thing I want to add is that Cinco de Mayo is very significant to the struggle of Mexican immigrants here in the City of Los Angeles. It really embodies and symbolizes the ongoing struggle for justice, for equity, for immigrant rights, for the many battles and challenges that immigrants here in the City of Los Angeles continue to struggle. So, we really want to thank the City of Los Angeles for standing with the immigrant, the Latino community, celebrating this day, celebrating the culture. We really recognize you, and we salute you for that ongoing struggle. We know we can always count on the City of Los Angeles as an ally of our community, and so we thank you for this important recognition. Thank you to all the different council members that have spoken today. Thank you to all the different council members that have spoken today. Thank you very much.
And now, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I would love to present this to the representative of the state of Puebla from Mexico, congress member. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we want to present this resolution, enseñando que aquí en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, una de las ciudades más diversas de todo el mundo, felicidades en este Cinco de Mayo, y tenemos mucho más trabajo que hacer, pero aquí estamos con ustedes. Felicidades y adelante. Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcón, for your second presentation. Mr. Alarcón.
I think I have them somewhere. I think you're right.
Hello again. This is my nephew.
Well, it is very much my pleasure, being a sports enthusiast, you know, it gives me, all of us, I think, a special pleasure where we can recognize the feats of some of our athletes in the city of Los Angeles. We have a very special athlete out of San Fernando High School who is joining us here today. And, you know, San Fernando has produced some amazing talent over the years. I know Mr. Weston is very familiar with it, even though you're from the other side of Los Angeles. Certainly, all the members from the San Fernando Valley know of the strong history of San Fernando High School's sports program. But today's presentation comes related to a story in the Daily News by Alex Valderas, who wrote a story entitled "After Conquering the City," San Fernando High's Miguel Gallegos Eyes the State. This young man has been wrestling since he was seven years old, according to his father, Miguel Gallegos Senior. Miguel is 18 years old now, has won many trophies and medals in his long wrestling career, from being a member of the San Fernando Boys and Girls Club, team state champions, to becoming a four-year varsity wrestler for San Fernando High School. He has a career record of 138 to 28, including 41 victories without a loss this season. And most recently, Miguel won first prize for the city and fifth place for the state. He was one of 14 city section champions who won the right to compete at the state finals tournament in Bakersfield in March, and has had to overcome many obstacles and challenges. Number one, I can relate to this, I know you won't believe this, shyness being one of his major obstacles, but his discipline and hard work have paid off. The support of his family and constant presence of his father have been instrumental to the development of his fierce determination and competitive spirit. Sounds like a politician. Mr. Gallegos has always told Miguel that education comes first, and he took it to heart. During all of these achievements, he has maintained a 3.8 GPA in the school's magnet program, ranking 10th in his class. Last month, he was named Player of the Year by his school. Yeah, we can applaud him for that. Miguel was being considered by prestigious schools like Stanford and Arizona State, but last week, he signed a letter of intent with the University of Colorado to study engineering, Mr. Cardenas. Last December, San Fernando was stripped of its 2010 team title and was sanctioned for using an ineligible wrestler, unfortunately. But a month later, the city, there have been other challenges that the Tigers have faced. But despite those challenges, we should not fail to recognize the tremendous accomplishments of individuals who had nothing to do with those problems. Nevertheless, the Tigers have dominated at the finals, winning seven of their eight championship matches, and Miguel has won his third city title in the 130-pound division. This is an unusual person. As you can see, his discipline in wrestling has paid off. I've often said that there is a direct correlation to success in sports and success in academics. Miguel stands before us as a true example of that, and we wish him well in Colorado. We know that that school is going to be better for it. So with that, I'd like to present this congratulatory certificate to Miguel Alberto Gallegos for his tremendous accomplishments, not only for wrestling, but also wrestling with his homework and doing such a tremendous job at that. I am serious when I say somebody like this can well serve in a public service capacity because we have to wrestle with problems all the time. So Miguel, thank you so much, congratulations.
Mr. Weston and Mr. Cardenas for comments, please. Mr. Weston, Mr. Cardenas, comments.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Miguel, I'd just rise to congratulate you. It's kind of sad that back east, wrestling is in every high school. They have a wrestling program, and when I was raising my boys, there was no wrestling program in the school. I would hope that we would grow the wrestling program because it's significant and the things that these wrestlers can do. Now, I wrestled, Miguel. I wrestled when I went to college, and let me tell you why. They didn't, the lowest weight class, I think it was like 106 or 112 back then, and I weighed like seven pounds less than that. We had a food table, so I could eat everything I wanted while everyone else was struggling to make the weight. I don't know if that's something that Miguel has to struggle. I mean, I would eat steaks while everybody else was eating salads. And I competed in one match, got beat up good, but I didn't get pinned, and then I retired. So I'm glad your career has gone in the other direction, and I will keep an eye out for you when you go to school in Colorado. And it's a heck of an accomplishment that you have a 3.8 grade point average. And so I guess that's really the reason why I rise, because pretty soon, you, after your Olympics, then you retire from wrestling and do other things. But anyway, you look like a fine young man with a fine family. Congratulations, congratulations.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I went to San Fernando High School, and so did my 10 other brothers and sisters, but I have brothers who actually wrestled for San Fernando High School, and some of them wrestled with Mr. Paez back here. And I've always been fond of the wrestling program that they have at the Boys Club in Pacoima, which has really inspired young people to believe in themselves and actually become city champions and always attempting to become state champions. But that has eluded us in the past, so hopefully we'll see that happen in the future. But what's more important than being a champion with a medal around your neck is actually being a champion in the classroom and being an example. It is so hard, ladies and gentlemen, to get into engineering programs in this country. It is extremely hard. Our kids in, at San Fernando High School are competing with the smartest, brightest kids around the world. People who, since they were in diapers, were told, "You're going to be an engineer, whether you like it or not," and have been getting straight A's and are actually at UCLA and at Colorado and at all of our great universities. So you to just be accepted as an engineering student is an incredible accomplishment, and I want to congratulate you and also thank you for being that kind of leader. But also, something struck me. Did you wrestle 130 pounds? Because Alarcón said 130. You look more like a 113-pounder.
No, it was actually 135.
135? Again, ladies and gentlemen, yeah, this kid is all muscle because what happens in wrestling, when you're normally a 160, you wrestle 130. And if you're normally a 135, you wrestle 113s. You don't eat salads, you eat air when you're on the wrestling team. But I just want to also congratulate you because you are a natural talent. Congratulations. But I also want to share with you, to, I want to challenge you to work with me on a project that I've started that I haven't abandoned, although it's something I want to continue, but maybe somebody like you can be better at it than me. There's a kid named Brian Moreno, and you may remember the name, Paez. He was 113 state champion three years in a row. And he, as a senior, when you become state champion in each state of the, in this nation, only the seniors who are state champions can actually go to the nationals. And this kid, Brian Moreno, went to the nationals. And guess who was the national champion that year at 113 pounds? Brian Moreno. Brian Moreno didn't get any offers to any universities around the world. Zero. None around the country, none from Iowa, where I'm sure they would love to have him. Brian Moreno had something happen to him that, in my opinion, was not his fault. When he was a little boy, his mother came to this country, and Brian Moreno doesn't have papers to be here. But he was national champion. And when I talked to him, after he graduated from high school and when he wasn't going to college and he was really not doing much to improve his life, I sat down with him and I asked him, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" He said, "I want to be an Olympic champion." With all due respect, ladies and gentlemen, when you're a national champion in the United States of America at any weight class, you can be an Olympic champion someday. But people dropped him. They didn't give him opportunities. I got him back in school. I had his cell phone number, and then he stopped answering my calls. I prayed for him, but again, I'm a 48-year-old man. Maybe I'm the wrong person to talk to him. I'm an engineer too. We have a lot in common. I was never a wrestler. I didn't have that discipline or your strength. But at the same time, maybe together, we can find Brian Moreno and we can inspire him to get back into school because I think that Brian Moreno, at the age of 25 or 30 or what have you, he can be a US Olympian or an Olympian from Mexico or wherever he wants to try out. But somebody has to get him there. So I'm sorry you came here to be appropriately acknowledged, but at this time, I can't pass up the opportunity to ask you to work with me on Brian Moreno. If you'll accept that challenge, I'll renew the fight. Let's find him. Let's see if we can help him. Again, engineering student, congratulations. You went to the state. Very few people get to do that. You're a wonderful kid. Again, like Mr. Weston said, beautiful family. You didn't do it by yourself. Didn't do it by yourself. And Mr. Paez, congratulations on keeping the program going. I know how tough it is. It's inspiring to see that you've been doing it, what, 20 years now? This year's 20 years. Congratulations. Look at your product. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcón.
Well, I just wanted to say thanks for being honored with this certificate. You know, it means a lot for the hard work I've had to put in, and I just want to say thanks to the council members, Alarcón, and I want to thank God, my family, who's been here to support me, my coaches, all my friends, you know, to push me, keep going, do my best.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
If I could take a moment, I'd like to ask Coach Paez to step forward and also express your feelings.
It's nice. Thank you very much for honoring my nephew to achieve the goals. And like you said, sir, I would like to see all these schools to have wrestling because it lets that aggression out. And all these schools that don't have them, you can see a lot of confrontations, where if you had that, they could put that on the mat for males and females, which there's Olympic wrestling for females as well. So this way, with your guys' help, to help the valley to establish wrestling programs in the high schools as well, maybe even younger, it would change our community, the community that we live in, preventing criminals to catch them at a very younger age, so we don't have to worry about walking the streets. And again, going back to honoring Veto with Coach Gonzalez and the family and coaches and wrestlers and with the politicians that are at our back, again, these are the battles that we have, and having you guys on our side, we could achieve these goals. Again, thank you.
Thank you, any council members. And I would challenge all council members to try and get closer to their wrestling weight. Thank you.
Some are turning out for the sumo wrestling, Mr. Alarcón. I'm going to exclude myself from that one. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Alarcón.
I neglected to, I didn't realize he has an individual coach as well, Terry Gillard, I believe. Coach Gonzalez, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Please. I'll keep it short, since John Paez already pretty much summed it up. A lot of our program, what it really does for these kids is to really keep them involved in school. A lot of these, I mean, we have had a lot of success in the classroom. We have articles on our team, being a high GPA. Miguel, his sophomore year, was part of a group of kids who, eight of them had 4.0 GPAs at that time, and there's 14 weight classes. So, I mean, a lot of it, we do try and get our kids, as they're coming in, to get into our magnet program, to get into the academic classes as well, so that they can not just succeed in the classroom, but also, I'm sorry, not just succeed on the mat, but also in the classroom. And Miguel is serving and has served as an example of how you do things on the mat and in the classroom. So he had examples to follow, men like Mike Lee, Pierre, some of the kids from our past that carry those GPAs. Some of them are UCLA, one of them is at Brown University. They have not just succeeded in the classroom, and he will serve as a role model for future kids that are now in seventh, eighth grade, and even some kids that are freshmen and sophomores that. All I have to say is, what he's doing or what he's been doing, that's exactly what you need to do in the classroom and on the mat to be a success. And I want to appreciate Councilman Alarcón, Councilman Cardenas, for all our support and all their help, especially this year that we had to face some tribulations. And I want to add that it wasn't through our fault, it was a paperwork issue that occurred three years ago, and it's definitely not these kids' fault. So I appreciate their support. They did rally behind us and wrote letters of support, and through that, one incident, yes, there was a negative thing that was placed on us, but this right here is an example of the positives that occurred in our program. And I want to thank the members, all the members of the council for this honor for Miguel and for our program. Thank you.
I just have to add one thing. First of all, Terry Gillard is the coach from the San Fernando Valley Boys and Girls Club, who I believe is, was part of your history, and so we want to thank the Boys and Girls Club again. But finally, let me say, Coach Paez is a volunteer for 20 years, and Herb, you were saying that our schools need to develop wrestling programs. San Fernando probably wouldn't have a wrestling program if it wasn't for Coach Paez, so we owe a debt of gratitude to him for all the kids that he has helped achieve great things.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcón, and congratulations once again to Miguel. Ms. Clerk, let's do the public comment now. And at a request of the mayor's office, items 10 and 12, please, forthwith. 10 and 12 forthwith. Daniel Gus, our first public speaker for today.
Good morning. I have a money-saving idea for the city. It starts with these envelopes. My 501(c)(3) charity receives hundreds of these from the city every year. 38 cents postage, probably 15 or more cents for printing and paper. You multiply that by about 150 animals that my charity saves, multiply that by hundreds of rescue partners, multiply that by dozens of city departments, and you'll probably save tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mentioned this to Ms. Barnett, no response, but city council can do something about that. At the North Central Shelter, apparently dozens of pit bulls have been stolen in the past week or two. If it is correct, I believe that there are several city employees who are on leave right now, and I hope that Ms. Barnett has told you about that because intact pit bulls missing by the dozens is not just a public integrity issue, it's a public safety issue. Speaking about Ms. Barnett, she is punting on animal cruelty issues. A restaurant in Century City had a painted pony, a painted pony at a Century City restaurant, and what did Ms. Barnett do? Her animal control officers are out doing licensing, so she sent it over to the SPCA LA. Mr. Cardenas warned Ms. Barnett about sending the city's law enforcement responsibilities to other agencies, and that's exactly what she's doing. She cannot punt on law enforcement. She is also not responding to tethered animals. This morning in Panorama City, a member of the Panorama City Neighborhood Council, she says, "Oh, send it to somebody else." says, "Oh, send it to somebody else." But that somebody else doesn't respond to animal cruelty complaints. This is going great, City Council. And also to Mr. Alarcon, I wanted to thank you very much for fighting to keep the mission shelter as city property. You don't give away a multimillion-dollar facility for a dollar, but the big issue is that it's going to be a shell game for the animal kill rates. If anybody cares to find out how that would be a sham when it comes to the city's kill rates, let me know. I'll tell you how.
Candido Mares. Candido Mares.
Good morning, Mr. President. Council members, again, welcome to the San Fernando Valley. And again, I'm proud to be a resident of the 12th District with the great Councilman Greg Smith. We only have a couple more months, but again, I want to make sure that I'm at every one of these meetings so I can honor you in many ways. And again, I don't want to brag about you, but you do more for kids than everybody else can talk about what they do, but you quietly do a lot of things for the kids in our community. Today, we're here, I'm here with Claudette McGee. She's with the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. We want to talk about an issue that is very important to all of you. The people that rent properties from the DWP's that are under the lines, nobody else wants that property. We have two gentlemen here, Mr. Armando Orozco and Mr. Venicio Ponzi. They represent about 50 owners of nurseries that are occupying properties underneath the DWP lines. Nobody else wants those properties. These were the people that went to DWP and said, "We'll take this property. We'll pay the fees. We'll pay the water bills." And so we are making money from what they're going through, and their health is at stake here. Now, what does DWP want them to do? They've raised their rates again. They're living with that, but now they want them to, with all the investments that they put into these properties for 15 to 20 years, they now want them to now bid with others who have no investment in the property. So can you imagine that happening to your home? Now, I'm asking each one of you, and I'm going to go down the line from Mr. Labond, Mr. Alarcon, across the board, Mr. Zine, all of you, please. The nurseries are in your community. These people have helped all of us improve the quality of life in our communities. Mr. Zine, you have an event coming up. This is the gentleman that's going to be donating the plants to your area. He's also, Mr. Smith, he's in our district. He's over on, what are you, Northoff? No, San Fernando Road. So again, they impact all of us, but it's wrong. Again, we know the DWP has to make, generate funds, but these folks have been doing it all along. We hope that, please, that we'll take a look at this. Let's be fair with them, and for them to have to bid when they have so much equipment, so much plants, et cetera, on these properties and now having, it's just wrong.
Thank you.
It is just wrong.
Donna Pierman.
All right, guys.
Donna Pierman.
I hope Mr. Garcia is still here. Anyway, I'm speaking behalf of Marion Fogler and her husband. I've been told by a city employee who's in the 501 and his wife that the contract before you is good. It's the best one you'll see. Members of the 501 should vote yes. Please do it for yourselves and join the others who already voted yes. I understand as a federal employee, sometimes you have to give up a little to stop an avalanche. You ask to give up a little bit for our fine city. Let's keep control, let's keep control in your hands. Do the right thing. Vote yes. DWP, why don't you get on board and volunteer and help our city? If everyone gives a little, it would help for the DWP to join in. We can get out of this crisis. Second subject, I want to tell people, don't be conned in by the gun buyback program. If you don't wish to own your firearm, you can be better compensated by a gun shop or a gun show. If 14-day background will be done, it's a requirement on all transactions. It will go to capable, good, responsible people, for people who still want to keep their firearms. I say, "Good for you. Let's keep that right." Germany first asked for people to give up their guns voluntarily, then went and took them by force. They rounded up these people. We need to protect ourselves against terrorists who want to hurt our country. We may be the militia to help our country, keep our, and help our democracy. Lastly, back to the city, City Council, let's have uniformly not divide all unions. All unions come together, work together. Do yourselves, the city attorney and all politicians, also ask to help our fine city. You did it with your raises, which is nice, but continue doing so and get on board and do yourselves what you ask others to do. So again, as I said, lastly, I want to make sure that the city employees who have not voted yes, please vote yes. It's in your best interest. Thank you.
Claudette McGee.
Thank you, councilmen, for giving me this opportunity to speak before you. I am Claudette McGee, a board member of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council and a co-chair of the Youth Education and Senior Citizens Committee. While being in that position, I've been in the position as co-chairing the Committee for Youth and Senior Citizen and Education. I myself and the other co-chair, Sigrid Ramos, has been visiting the schools, the recreation centers, and the senior citizen center to determine what their resources are that will help improve the quality of life for the residents that live in our district. And we have also been looking at what the needs are. We have discovered a great need, not only in the schools, the rec center, and the senior citizen center, for computers. We, as a council, have provided some funding, but we didn't have sufficient funds to get the sufficient number of computers for the senior citizens now for the youth centers. We are hoping that you, as councilmen, may know of funds that we may access, you may have, that you may wish to donate. And if so, we would be greatly appreciated if this could be distributed to the senior citizen center and to the schools and the rec centers. Also, while visiting the senior citizen center, we discovered that the parking lot, which I understood it was also supposed to have been a park, is in great need of either upgrading or paving the parking lot, either, if it's a park, providing another, what is it, construction for the park? Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I would suggest you discuss that with your council member, and maybe some of those matters can be addressed. Rick Nightengale.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Nightengale, followed by, we have three after, Mr. Nightengale.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. Boy, Sunday's paper really put it to, put it to it pointy about the city, what they make. There is nobody in the city that is making less than $50,000. That's what, I'm just going by what the paper says. Every salary is over $50,000, and the pay raises. And why does a city and the government go percentage? I don't understand it. You make $50,000, that's $3,000 a year if you get a 6% pay raise. And I don't know why the magic number is 6% when they go for a negotiation, but that's where it starts. So you get a $3,000. How many people make over $100,000? That's $6,000 raise a year. That's crazy. No wonder everybody's in trouble. I mean, hello. How can you make that kind of money and then that's plus benefits? That's on the paycheck. That sounded like the regular, like when I was in the union and I was working, you get so much, you get a pay, and we had to put in so much retirement, so much healthcare, so much and so forth. And that ended up, we got a quarter an hour on our paycheck. And they're getting this kind of money? This is ridiculous. It's a wonder why this started a long time ago, why you people have percentages. I don't understand it. If you get off this percentage and go with a dollar amount, it's a lot more, you can understand it more and it wouldn't, they wouldn't have pay raises. And then you have bonuses. Like there's a truck driver here. They turn around and haul the trash, they get a bonus because they haul trash to the dump. If people don't want the job, then don't take the job. You're not forced to take the job if you don't like the job. I changed my job four or five times because I hate working indoors. I mean, this is your job to turn around and negotiate this kind of stuff, and you're just not doing it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Glenn Bailey.
I rode my bike here. Thank you, President Zine, council members. I wanted to comment on two issues. Number one, the reapportionment effort that's going through for the city of Los Angeles, as you know, once every 10 years, there were not neighborhood councils 10 years ago, and we never got the memo that you're considering appointments and the other elected officials. So it would be very much appreciated if whoever's in charge could send a memo to the neighborhood council saying that you're considering these appointments and invite our advice as required by charter, or at least nominations. The other issue I wanted to discuss was the community garden issue that was considered before budget and finance, and you had representation from Recreation and Parks. I want to assure you that the gardeners did not know, nor were they notified, of the fee increase that was imposed in July. They only found out about it in November by accident. And I also want to assure you that with regards to Pulvera Garden Center in CD5 and Orcott Ranch Garden in CD3, that that 400% increase that was originally imposed in July is still in the document that was approved by the Wreck and Park Commission the day before yesterday. So I'm requesting that the city council take jurisdiction under Rule 245 of the council rules and consider this matter further. I think that the gardeners in general, at the public meetings that were held, were not treated respectfully by the higher-ups in Recreation and Parks, and I think that, I think this issue deserves further consideration. The Recreation and Parks, in their original plan, they only had nine gardens. They forgot that they had five other gardens. That's an indication of how well that they've been monitoring their community gardens. So I request a Rule 245 council jurisdiction on this issue. Thank you.
Marion Fogler.
Yes, I'm on board. The fact is that there is a contingency here, and it's got to be very candid and be level-headed here. And put your pride aside, the people out there who haven't voted for the 4% contribution to healthcare, you've got to do it. Because I meet people out in the public, in the private sector right now, they're paying for private, they're paying for the healthcare. I don't see what, doesn't make any sense to do it here either. And, you know, we've got to do it according, according to, you know, in steps. Can't just throw it out all at once, but this is good. 4% is a good start. And folks, let me tell you something more. It's a lot worse other places. This is a real good deal. It's a gem. Take it. And number two, this is going to close it for three years, so you won't have to worry about it. Guys will have to, you can do your jobs and won't have any problem. The city's going to take care of the rest. And I'm hoping that Department One of Power will come on board to do the same as well, to give back to the ratepayers, because our utilities keep going up, and they can help the solar program, get better efficiency. I think that, I think you guys should know that we can get money back in the DWP if we can get the workers there to give back too, as well. So that would be a benefit to everybody. And secondly, it would help in selling it to the taxpayers, seeing that not only is the city investing, but the workers are investing too, in their retirement and their pensions, then the people will start giving some tax dollars to fix the city up. The streets, our trimming of our trees, to helping to bring new equipment at Hyperion. Think about it, folks, the millions and millions of dollars that we can be getting here and bring back the jobs that the city needs so badly. And I hope that everything goes well for everybody. Thank you very much.
Let's go downtown. Dr. Clyde Williams at City Hall downtown.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Where has everybody been? I don't know. We held a neighborhood council meeting last night, and there were no representatives from CD1 or CD14, 14 especially. However, we're also concerned about the LA Fire Department's redeployment or deployment or brush clearance. So we would like to have the CD14 provide us with a meeting, as is done in other council districts, regarding the entire deployment of fire stations and who's going to lose and who's going to gain. So also announcements, Highland Park, sorry, the Highland Theater on Figueroa will have a relighting of their main sign on Figueroa on the 17th of May at 7:00 p.m. But before that, there is a peace march coming up in a week and a half on the 14th, starting at 10:00 a.m. in Glazal Park and proceeding north. So we're quite concerned about these events and where the CDs are participating. Also, Loomis Day is coming up in about a month, June the 5th. So we highly recommend everybody to come out and enjoy Northeast LA. As part of that, we're also concerned about Loomis's heritage in the Southwest Museum. What's the status of it? Where's it going? It's closed right now. Autry doesn't want to reopen it. We don't know what's going on, so we'd like to have some sort of status report either to any of the relevant neighborhood councils or to LA 32 Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Walter Bechtel at Downtown City Hall.
Okay, good morning. I just wanted to say something about the quorum again. Last Wednesday, you, like I said before, it didn't make that much difference, people showing up late, as far as I'm concerned. It's just when you start to conduct city business without a quorum or without anybody there. And I noticed that Mr., one of the council members gave me a big hurrah from the hallway, and I couldn't tell if it was because of everything I had to say and what we're listening to. And I realized, well, he probably was doing that because Ms. Perry had told everybody to be in their seats before they conducted business on one of the items that they were listening, they were conducting. And this is not only going on in the city council chamber here, it's especially going on over at CRA. And in fact, you're not even conducting any business at all. Appreciate it, somebody tell somebody over at CRA that we have a right, a federal right to appeal a case. And my appeal, it was filed timely. They're still dodging the hearing of the appeal. Appreciate it, somebody would tell them that there is also a thing called latches, and if anything is reasonably put forward on an appeal, if you refuse to take the appeal or if you don't want to accept it timely, anything reasonable within that person's, what I'm asking for in my appeal is something that becomes a default in a courtroom. Please, I would prefer just having to take the appeal than have to go to, I believe it's the federal court, they have to file in a district court if you refuse to take the appeal at all. So please, somebody over there, or somebody here, will you give them the elbow over there at CRA and tell them, "Mr. Bechtel wants his appeal. He has a right to, and he demands his appeal." Thank you.
Matt Dowd.
Yes, thank you, City Council. Why am I here? Because things didn't happen yet when they were supposed to, according to a federal judge. So now there's a super attorney with 11 plaintiffs. He's charging 750 an hour, and he's on the record now. So he's gone because your attorney, see, I've got your criminal attorney now, Claudia Martin. She's begging the appeal court for a 30-day extension to file her response to my appeal brief, my opening brief on my, one of those stupid infractions off the beach. So what have I just done? I filed, I've got another one that's active. I just filed that seven days early, so she can deal with that now, but she's begging the court for time against me. I don't even have an attorney. And she's begging like, "Oh, I read the thing." She filed to the court so she could get the 30-day extension. Oh, please, I'm snowed under. I'm doing all the work because of the budget cuts. I want to thank all the people to see me out on Venice Beach, see me at Public Comment. Of course, I appreciate it, and that's my public announcement right there. Thank you to the city of Los Angeles for quitting the enforcement. However, we've still got problems at the other end of the beach now. They're leaving me alone, but now they're starting to bring up all this crap against these other people. And so they're coming back down on me again, going, "Oh, yeah, we need to be back down here," because the cops are harassing us. So I'm tired of the harassment, but that's why, this is a steamroller now. It's a steamroller. It's not quitting. I just... I just got the big gun on the case. So let's roll this to another $300,000 in attorney fees that you just paid, unless you get someone from the mayor's office, or somebody to be a liaison.
All right, thank you. Time is up, let's come back to the valley, and next item, Madam Clerk.
To continue item 11 to May 10th?
Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, I put that item up there, and I know Ms. Perry wants to be here, and I agree with that, but I would like the city departments to, between now and Tuesday, to give us a laid-out understanding of what the issues are in this particular package going forward. To put it on a Friday agenda and to have it blocked there as we do all these presentations, I need some time to think it through, and I'd like that documentation, if we could get it Monday, so I can study it all by Tuesday. Then I would support continuing it, unless, colleagues, you want to hear a tantalizing beginning of it from Jerry, and then more on Tuesday. It's really up to you all here about that, but I do want to build-
There's four cards on it, Mr. Rosendahl, there's four folks that are here for this particular matter. Colleagues, it is a pleasure to continue it, hear from the public.
Maybe the public should be allowed to speak.
Do we want to hear from the public now? We can hear from the four members of the public that are here, and then we'll continue until Friday? All right. Or till Tuesday? You want to continue till Tuesday? Well, is Ms. Perry's representative here? So we need to check with her office to see if that'll work, so the folks that are here, if they want to return. But let's hear from the folks that are here, and then meantime, we'll find out from Ms. Perry's office on Tuesday. Mr. Corcoran?
Well, I would be concerned if we were foreclosing public comment on Tuesday by hearing public comment now.
No, we can-
It would be more appropriate to have public comment when we have our staff report, and when we're actually considering the matter, than to hear public comment now and foreclose it later.
But we can do it both, we can do both if we wish.
If we do both, that's fine.
And the folks that are here, if they're here now. So let's hear from the folks that are here, and we'll continue the public comment when the matter comes up before us. There's only four cards here. Donna, Donna Pierman?
Thank you for letting me speak today. Here we go again, a huge CRA project, a museum in a large parking facility, public plaza and mixed-use tower with affordable units. Yes, Grand Avenue project. We cost our, it costs, our sacrifice, $5,626,000. Do we really need this project? Our city is in deficit crisis because of this project by the CRA. Prop 22 is keeping CRA lucrative. Our MTA is floundering, cutting back local buses, and our CRA is thriving, being the Pied Piper to our city council who follows along to their music. Los Angeles City Council, you need to stop your overspending. This is not necessary to have huge, overdeveloped projects, and we lose our basic city services. Our streets are not being paved quickly, it's a slow process with a minimum of people working. Our trees aren't being trimmed. Will furlough still be, still be necessary to fund our CRA? Because our city employees have to fund the CRA. There's a public lose for our CRA. It's millions here, folks, billions altogether. It's not small projects, mom and pop shops that should, that shouldn't have left. Small businesses to help the middle class, your entrepreneurs who need new ideas to make our country great. Let's stop the CRA, Hungry Machine, who wants to look for, like, make us look like New York City. No to CRA, does huge mistakes, drying our city of its resources. Who will it help? Some of the affordable housing museum, but most of our upper class gain. What's cost, it's cost $5 million here, but our city will go bankrupt because of the CRA. Is it worth it? I say no. I say we need to get rid of the CRA projects, we need to get rid of the Grand Avenue project. This has been a sore spot for a lot of people, it's not gonna help the city, and we need to keep it for the city, city employees and for our city. No on CRA.
Mary Ann Fogler?
Well, I think that the CRA should be getting money from the business, business community, not from the city. Because we're cutting back services, we've got, we've got guards on furlough here that are complaining, and that's the reason why they voted down the 4% for themselves. And that is a sticking point, and I want to get them to pass this 4% contribution healthcare. And this is, this is like a thorn in the grass, folks. By you supporting the redevast CRA, your, you know, your employees are irritated, okay? And I'm trying to tell them that despite of it, we're going to have to, we're gonna come out ahead, because we're going to take power here, okay? We're gonna take control of you, of your spending, one way or the other, because the city workers are not gonna put up with it, okay? They're going to vote for this thing, because CRA doesn't have the funding without the city. And the taxpayers are not going to be voting for it, because a lot don't even show up to vote. And that's the problem, the, where's the constituents to address the CRA, okay? So, what, folks, we need to start clamping down on the CRA, you need to call the governor, tell him to put a clamping on them, because our city is in a $457 million deficit. We got to close in the budget crisis here, the budget has to be balanced. So you can't just do it on the backs of just workers, they're gonna do their part, because there is some, there is some, there is some fruit to it. But you've got to do it other ways too, you've got to cut your spending here. This isn't the time for the building and construction. They want to do it, let the private enterprise, the private development do it, not city funds, not government money, where we need it for our services, because the public is not going to be, is not voting, they're not participating, and the workers are raising, rising up, and we don't want to have it anymore.
Ron Miller, our next speaker on this matter, Ron Miller.
Morning, council. I'm Ron Miller with the Los Angeles Orange County Building Construction Trades, and I want to speak in favor of this project. Absolutely. Right now, I have, I represent 140,000 construction workers in LA and Orange County, 40% of which are out of work, members of your community. This project is one piece of the puzzle of getting our members back to work, getting them to pay taxes, to support the city. This developer is a good developer, he's agreed to build this project with an agreement with the building trades, which is gonna produce local hire, put my apprentices back to work, and put also new members of the community back to work, or to work, in a good career in construction, good-paying, middle-class jobs. So I urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Downtown City Hall to Matt Dowd.
Yes, thorn in the side right here, it's a big problem. Unfortunately for the workers, and it doesn't make sense if the city's broke, and the state is broke, and the federal government is broke, to hand out like a billion dollars on a project that's gonna be worth 500 million, so people can pay some tax to support the city. The city is broke, and here's why, because they mismanaged the pension money by funneling into these kind of projects, this one in particular as well. And now, and the CRA is famous for this, for paying exorbitant amounts of money for things, and then handing them over for chicken feed to their, to their cronies and developers, and it's, and who front-end load the contracts, and they all get paid up front, and the things don't get built, and then the price tanks, and nothing's worth what they said it was, but they already ran off with all the money. Don't you get that? They already took the money. The pension funds are dry, the city is liable for $650 million every year to pay all the retired police and fire people, and it's because of projects like this. And here's something, see, really, you shouldn't even let a lot of these people talk, because they're not even talking about the specifics of the project, they're just like, oh, the CRA this, the CRA that. Unfounded, here's what I want to comment on, you've got a thing here, you're making a second amendment to the parking facility and museum development agreement to clarify various definitions. Classic city of Los Angeles, trying to clarify everything after the fact. And I'm testimony to that of Venice Beach, five years now, and you still don't have anyone capable of organizing some vendors and performers along your biggest tourist attraction in the city. That's how fucking inept you are.
Well, that's it for him. All right, that matter will be, well, here's an appropriate language, I think, should result in his lack of appearance. How many, Mr. Smith? 30 council days. Mr. Dowd is banned from city council. He is, Mr. Parks, 30 days, 30 council days, Mr. Dowd. I understand that, but I think the rules only permit us to do that for a period of time. Mr., Madam City Attorney? 30 council days, can we go further than that? All right, well, at this time, he's banned from the council, from speaking for 30 council days. All right, so that matter's gonna be continued until Tuesday, we have checked with CD9. Calendar days? All right.
It's an issue that-
Madam City Attorney, can you please go on the record for this? We'll hear from the city attorney.
Somebody recently? What was the time of the ban?
I believe it's 30 calendar days, not council days.
I suggest that we be consistent with that.
And if council wants to revisit the policy, we would be glad to brief council on that subject, but that would have to be pursuant to a notice-
Mr. Smith?
Please check the rule and report back just next week. I, as one of the people that authored that, I believe there's a repetitive penalty that increases, and this gentleman has repeatedly filed the rule.
And I hear from my colleague, Mr. O'Connell, he agrees, calendar days, and again, we would be glad to brief the council, assuming that there's a notice taken in this place.
Yeah, there's an additional penalty for continuing to do it, so I think-
As of right now, it's 30 calendar days, and then we will get a briefing next Tuesday by the city attorney's office, if there can be additional penalties imposed. So that would be the direction on that. And again, number 11, without objection, will be continued until Tuesday. We have confirmed that with CD9. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 16, call special by councilman Coretts and for cards.
There are no cards in the file. Cards have been removed, Mr. Coretts. I understand the speakers have withdrawn their request?
Yes, I just need to ask some questions on the record of our engineer and the U if he would come up. Regarding the Bellagio parcel map. I'd just like to clarify that what is before us today is the parcel map approval of the December 6, 2006, West LA Area Planning Commission, and the conditions attached to that decision, and that that is what is before us today, is that correct?
You from Public Works Engineering, you have the condition being enforced at this terms of the West LA Planning Commission's action from 2006.
And are there any subsequent modifications, whether asked for by the applicant or not? Are there any modifications that are before us today?
None, there are none.
Well, thank you, that clarification addresses the concerns that members of our community and that I had, and I now feel comfortable moving forward and voting for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts, so colleagues on number 16. Over the roll. Close the roll, tablet to vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you very much, that matter's passed. Madam Clerk, Mr. Coretts?
If that matter could go forth with-
On number 16 for Mr. Coretts. Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for post and referral.
Post and refer.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilman resigned requests to leave at 12 on May 31st for city business, and that meets council policy.
That's approved.
That clears the desk.
Mr. Parks?
We have a special one for Ms. Perry.
We have a 23? I haven't seen that. Mr. Parks? Special one.
City Attorney, you're gonna make the findings?
On, on May 3rd at approximately 9:20 PM, six-year-old Kimberly Aru was struck and killed by a hit-and-run driver of a black, older-model SUV on 49th Place near Hoover Street. Immediate action is required to capture the suspect for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.2, before considering the substantive motion.
Mr. Parks?
Once we approve it, I just have two comments.
All right, on the findings, open the roll. Close the roll, tablet to vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much, in behalf of Ms. Perry, we have a 16-year-old, I'm a six-year-old, Kimberly Aru, who was running out on the street on West 49th Street after a ball, was struck by a car, and hit-and-run, and succumbed to those injuries. We have a $50,000 reward request, and ask any information regarding this be directed to Ruben, Officer Ruben Mendoza, South Traffic Division at 323-290-6063. And so we really would like the information, they've run out of leads, and hopefully this reward will help them solve this case.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, on the matter, open the roll. Close the roll, tablet to vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you, thank you. Colleagues, Madam Clerk?
The desk is clear.
All right, announcements, colleagues, any announcements? There is a gun buyback program tomorrow citywide. If you want to get your mom a Mother's Day gift and you don't have any money, turn in that gun and get the gift cards. It's Mother's Day, it's for Mother's Day. Ms. Hahn, am I correct? Well, if you don't have the money and you want to buy your mom a nice gift, well, well, my mom passed away, so, but there are a lot of moms out there, and people want to give them a gift, and they coordinate this during the holiday season, so, many locations, there is one in the San Fernando Valley on Sepulveda, just north of San Fernando Mission Road, there will be reserve officers, Mr. Smith, working that location, the gun buyback program citywide. Announcements, colleagues, for, any other announcements? Mr. Rosendahl, and then we'll do a journey after that.
Yes, Mark Antonio Grant, one of my deputies, is getting married tomorrow, and I have the pleasure of officiating as the minister in it to a great lady, and we're all excited about him getting married tomorrow.
Very good, Mr. Rosendahl. A journey motions, please stand for a journey motions. Ms. Hahn, a journey motions.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Frances Loretta Stripski, who passed away peacefully in her home after a long battle with cancer. She was born in Honolulu, Hawaii in 1947, and then came to California to attend college at Marymount, where she studied to be a teacher. She began teaching at St. Anthony of Padua in Gardena, where she met her husband Keith, who was also a teacher there. Fran taught at Mary Star of the Sea before settling at Holy Trinity, where she taught for the next 30 years in San Pedro. She loved her job, loved her junior high students, and they loved her just as much. Even after Fran was diagnosed with breast cancer in 2003, she continued teaching until she retired in 2009. She was so positive in her outlook on life, and her faith and love for Jesus kept her going strong. Fran was so loving and devoted to her family, she is, they are deeply, deeply sad since she has passed away. She's survived by her husband Keith, her daughter, Mila Marie, her son Paul, her two sisters, Loretta Bednorz and Patricia Eason, her two brothers, Pablo Cortez and Warren Cortez, her seven grandchildren, Noah, Shawnee, Sophia, Chase, Ally, Rex, and Sonny, and her many nieces and nephews. I have one more, I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Alexander Hagan, who was born in 1919 in Denver, Colorado, and just passed away a few days ago at the age of 91. After serving in the Merchant Marines during World War II, he entered the real estate business, along with his devoted wife, Charlotte. For the next 60 years, he became a leading force in the California real estate industry, building well over 100 shopping centers, many in underprivileged, south-central Los Angeles communities. He built the, in Willbrook, he built the Kennethon Plaza, and then in the community of Watts, he built the Martin Luther King Shopping Center. Vermont and Slauson was one of his first shopping centers. He is credited with starting the National Buyers Guide, which was a major real estate publication. A friend and advisor to political figures, Mr. Hagan was appointed by Governor George DeMajin to the Los Angeles Science and Industry Museum Commission, and appointed by Mayor Tom Bradley to the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum Commission, where he served as president during the 1984 Olympics, and for Pope John Paul II's first-ever visit to Los Angeles. Charlotte, the love of his life, for more than 60 years preceded him in death in 2000. He leaves behind a legacy of hard-working achievements and a loving family. His family includes his children, Alex III and his wife- His family includes his children, Alex III and his wife Betty, Charles and his wife Diana, Robert, who was deceased, and grandchildren, Alex IV, Andrew, Autumn, Isabella, and Charlotte, and great-grandchildren, Adam, Ariel, and Gavin. Mr. Hagan was almost like a second father or grandfather to me. He actually gave me the first job I, I had after I had stayed home with my, raising my children for 10 years, and I became his marketing director at the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza, and actually became one of the assistant managers there, and then became his marketing director for many of his shopping centers. So it was, I will always be grateful to him and his wife Charlotte, who were really a huge part of the landscape of real estate here in Los Angeles.
Ms. Hahn, all members on, I know Mr. Hagan, a wonderful gentleman, so, all members on that adjournement motion. Colleagues, any other adjournement motions from the colleagues? I have one. Arthur Angel passed away May 3rd. Arthur Angel, also known as Art, that's what his friends called him, passed away Tuesday, born in Los Angeles, July 2nd, 1924. He was 86 years of age. Grew up in Los Angeles, went to Emmanuel Arts High School, graduated from UCLA with an engineering degree, later went on to serve in the United States Army Air Corps for two years, where he was an airline, airplane mechanic, working on the B-29s. After service, he went to work for Douglas Aircraft as a draftsman. March of 1949, he married his love, Elaine, they raised three sons in Venice and Palos Rudes, where they lived to sail together as a family. Relocated Tarzana in 1972. Art worked until 1986 as a marketing manager for defense-related computer products. Retired, continued to be active as a real estate broker in the community. Lovely wife Elaine is a senior representative for the Tarzana Neighborhood Council, as well as being on the land use committee. She's also on the committee for our upcoming senior symposium, which will be held at the One Generation Senior Enrichment Center in receipt on May 14th. Services are to be held. King Harbor Yacht Club in Redondo Beach on May 10th at noon. Louis Flowers' family asked for donations in his memory to either the King Harbor Youth Foundation, or the National Kingly Foundation of Southern California and Southern Nevada, survived by his wife of 62 years, Elaine Angel. Three sons, Drew, Ross, and Keith. May he rest in peace, Arthur Angel. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This will conclude our meeting. We will resume next Tuesday. Have a lovely weekend, signing off from San Fernando Valley to the United City Hall.